For the purposes of considering such matters that may come before it, I will now call the meeting to order. I'm going to ask everyone to rise for a moment of silence and remain standing for the pledge. Thank you.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You think it's hard to see them, but it's not. That's right on cue, there wasn't. Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Here.
Tanner?
Present.
Here.
Morrison?
Here.
Bailey?
President Graham?
Present.
Mr. President, they say no man is an island, but apparently tonight I am, so I ask a motion to excuse the absent members.
I'll second that.
All right, I have a motion by Mr. Rodriguez and a second by Ms. Coniston to excuse the absent members. Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Tanner?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
All right, the absent members have been excused. Next, we have our approval of minutes for October 16, 2018, agenda and regular meeting minutes.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the October 16 minutes.
Second. A motion by Ms. Coniston, a second by Mr. Tanner for approval of the October 16, 2018 minutes. Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Tanner?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
The minutes have been approved. It's our first opportunity for poll public. If anyone would like to come forward, you'll have up to three minutes. All right, apparently everybody has other plans for the evening, so we'll move on to our standing committee reports, and we'll begin with Administration and Financial Management. That's Chairperson Bailey. However, he's unable to meet to...he's unable to attend the meeting this evening, but I do know that that committee did meet last Tuesday. Their minutes are on file, and they shall also meet again next Tuesday sometime after 6:30. Next, we have Community and Elder Advocacy, Chairperson Elmore. Chairperson Elmore is unable to attend the meeting this evening. That committee also met last Tuesday, and their minutes are also all on file in the council office, and they shall also meet next Tuesday sometime after 6:30. Now, I think the next chairman is here. That's Community Standards and Enforcement, Chairperson Rodriguez. Yes, I see him down there at the end.
Keep going, you're on the roll.
Gilligan?
Mr. President, the Committee Standards and Enforcement met last Tuesday. Our minutes are on file. We will meet again next Tuesday sometime after 6:30.
All right, thank you, sir. Next, we have Economic Development. That's Chairperson Morrison.
Thank you, Mr. President. Economic Development also met. Our minutes are on file, and we will meet again next Tuesday sometime after 6:30 in the back.
All right, thank you, sir. Next up, we have Infrastructure Maintenance and Services, Chairperson Heck.
Thank you, Mr. President. Infrastructure Maintenance and Services also met. Our minutes are on file. We have no pending legislation, and we will meet next Tuesday in the back sometime after 6:30.
All right, thank you. Next, we have Public Safety, Chairperson Coniston.
Thank you, Mr. President. Public Safety met last week. Our minutes are on file, and we'll meet again in the back, maybe sometime after 6:30 next week on Tuesday.
All right, sounds good. Maybe you should have your husband.
I think that's a good idea.
Show him how to work that cell phone.
No, show him, teach him a little bit about safety. All right, so lastly, we have Parks and Recreation. That's Chairperson Tanner.
Thank you, Mr. President. Parks and Recreation also met, I think it was actually two weeks ago, in the back, and our minutes are on file. We also had the groundbreaking of the YMCA. Really nice thing coming into Whitehall. Great improvement, it's going to look great, I can't wait. And we'll meet again in the back sometime after 6:30, and I have a feeling somebody just came in the back door.
Yeah, all right. So those are all the standing committee reports we have. Next up, we have our officials' reports, and we'll begin with our mayor, Ms. Kim Mader.
Thank you very much, and I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight. It's nice to see some new faces. Would just like to give some great news, is that our Parks and Recreation Department won a lot of awards at the Ohio Parks Conference, a state conference, actually. They won so many, I can't remember what all of they are, first, second, and third places, but I can tell you what they...some of them were about. One of them was about the Park Ranger Program that we had, also the program that we had connection with our police officers as well, in that they would come out and patrol parks. It was regarding the grant that we got with that. We also had a first-place award for the three-on-three basketball tournament. They were very impressed with the way that that was handled, and how many one-on-one teams, all the way from, I think it was younger folk up to older people, and that turned out very, very well, and we're definitely looking to do that again next year. We also, I think, got a second-place award for a unique weekend event, and we started with our movie night at Movie in the Park. We went over then to Food Truck and Fun Fest, and ended up with the three-on-three basketball tournament the next day, so...and I think there were some more. That's all I can remember right now, but so...next time you see Director Sorrell, or you see Parks and Recreation members, give them a big round of applause, and I know we have one right over here. Hi, Mark. So just wanted to say that was very, very good news. Thank you. That's all I have for this evening.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Next up, we have our city attorney, Attorney Mr. Michael Bivens.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council. Thank you as well, everyone that has come out this evening. From the city attorney's office in the month of October, we prosecuted in our mayor's court 328 cases through our mayor's court. Out of those 328 cases, only 47 of those were committed by Whitehall residents of a criminal nature. That's roughly 14 percent, so that is the numbers in our Whitehall mayor's court. We do presently have four individuals that are matriculating through the two-year process for the opiate and drug court, and so we meet every Tuesday across the street at the police station, and we go through the litany of things that those individuals that are a part of that drug court go through. And so far, I would certainly say that what we're experiencing is in the side of success. We're seeing a lot of change in a positive direction with the individuals that are going there. Next, just unofficially, I know tonight is election night. Everyone's emotions are high, everyone's thoughts are towards their particular candidate. Having run for office, and I'm certain every one of you up here would agree, and anyone out there who's ever run for office knows that it's an incredibly honorable thing to stand up and to try to lead and to try to express your ideas, but one thing that I hope, and I just express this as Michael Bivens, not the city attorney, just someone that's a citizen, because as the city of Whitehall, we don't exist in a vacuum. I just hope that as a city, and as a country, and as a state, we can come together civilly, and that we can be brothers and sisters, and agree to disagree when it's time to be disagreeable, but at least be civil, and to come together in a way that we champion the greatest ideals of our democracy, not the ideals of pettiness. And so I just want to say that, and then lastly, just because I'm on this soapbox act...
Here we go.
Yeah, our Rams are going against a formidable team on Friday, and I hear a lot of hype about Maslin, and I'll speak their name, because they're worthy of their name being spoken. However, they have not faced Whitehall, and they haven't faced the pride, and they haven't faced the heart, and they haven't faced the intestinal fortitude that exists, not only in this community, but by every single young man that's playing on that field. And I, yes, I am a little biased, because I have a son that's on that team, so I don't make any...I don't make any...cast any aspersions with respect to that, but I really do believe that on Friday, regardless of the outcome, they're going to be ready to meet that challenge, because they represent our community, and they represent the finest ideology that exists in our community, and so for that, I'll see you, Maslin, on Friday, and Arlenfield and Mansfield, and my final words are, "Go Rams."
Yay! Yay!
All right, thank you, sir. Next, we have our city auditor, Mr. Dan Miller.
I've got nothing to say. Thanks for coming.
All right, how about our Director of Development and Public Service, Mr. Zach Woodruff?
I have nothing this evening, sir.
Okay, well...
And his heart, he wants to say, "Go Rams," I know it.
Mr. Quinzel, it's up to you.
Well, thank you, Mr. President, members of council. I have no official report tonight, however, I would like to recognize the passing of one of Whitehall's civil...previous civil servants, Mr. Darryl Todd.
Do not do that. Sorry to hear that. All right, well, we have the following official's reports that have been filed in the council office since our last meeting. We have the Division of Fire overtime report for September 2018. We have the notice...a notice from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control for a new D1 liquor permit for 4263 East Main Street LLC, Whitehall, Ohio 43213. We've also received a notice from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control for a new D2 liquor permit for...I can't pronounce this. I apologize, I cannot pronounce this. Hebra Bel...
Belena.
What she said.
Aberherkalena.
That part I can do.
Oh, yeah, I checked.
DBA Mini Ethiopian Coffee House in Caryout, 20...
201.
Two, yes. 201, South Hamilton Road, Whitehall, Ohio 43213. We also have another notice from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control for a new D1 liquor permit for Drankful Lady Incorporated, 4263 East Main Street, Whitehall, Ohio 43213. Something like that, doesn't look right. Apparently two places are right next to each other. We also have the minutes from the October 4, 2018, Meeting of the Planning Commission, the agenda for the October 10, 2018, Meeting of the Parks and Recreation, and we have the minutes from the September 12, 2018, Meeting of the Parks and Recreation. Those are all the communications petitions and claims that we have for this evening. We'll move on to our public hearing for the evening, which is Ordinance 902018. I will open the public hearing in just a moment. That ordinance reads, "Amending zoning map attached to Chapter 1122 of the 1970 codified ordinances of the City of Whitehall, Ohio, and as subsequently amended, amending the planning...the planned apartment district development plan on property located at 540 South Hamilton Road, parcel number 090001623, property owned by Hamilton Crossing Homes LLC." That public hearing is now officially open. If anyone would like to come forward and speak on behalf of Ordinance 902018, this is your opportunity to do so.
I wanted to follow up with you from our last meeting two weeks ago. As you can see on the site plan that was presented to you, we took your suggestions on improvements in regards to landscaping and fencing, and we have added them onto the current site plan. And are there any questions about that?
Everybody good? All right, no, we have no questions.
Thank you.
Is there anyone who would like to...anyone else who would like to speak in favor of Ordinance 902018? All right, is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to Ordinance 902018? Please come forward, state your name and address, and break it.
My name is Mark Schieber. I'm a landscape market tech, and I live at...I'm a resident at 921 Fairway Boulevard. Excuse me. I'm here not necessarily in opposition. I am in favor of the project. However, while you make your approvals in terms of accepting and bringing these buildings and new plans into order, I would like to request that maybe you take a close look at the corner that exists at Hamilton and Aetna, that is presently fenced off drainage pond. The...it is a pond designed as a detention basin for water. I'd like to know what they intend to do with the additional storm water that will be produced from the addition of the additional units in the project that they're trying to do, and that that water, wherever that goes, is probably going to impact that corner also. That they take a look at a potential redesign of that that's been official to not only them, but also the local residents on the entrance to our parkway system. We've done a wonderful job of improving the park along there. It would be nice that that corner be a part and piece of the park, or at least look like a continuation in relationship to it, by designing that water system as a bio-retention basin and walking gardens that can be used, if not just by the residents, by the local public. So I would like to suggest that in order that they move ahead with that development, that you seriously ask to take a look at what their storm water improvement plan might be in context and in relationship to what their development plan is.
Do we have...
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to come forward at this time to speak in opposition to Ordinance 902018? All right, I will close this public hearing on Ordinance 902018, and at this time, I'm going to ask Ms. Frymark to call the roll on whether each member of council has given a copy of each item of legislation that's listed on the agenda prior to the meeting and including any add-on legislation. Before I go any further, just hang on about that, I want to enter into the record that Ms. Elmore did enter the meeting...I didn't notice the time, but she's been here almost the whole time, so even though she's excused, she decided to show up. Good for you. All right, at this time, Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Tanner?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
All right, we'll begin our ordinances and resolutions for the evening as normally we start with our third readings. We have, first up, Ordinance 902018. It's "Amending the zoning map attached to Chapter 1122 of the 1970 codified ordinances of the City of Whitehall, Ohio, and as subsequently amended, amending the planned apartment district development plan on property located at 540 South Hamilton Road, parcel number 090001623, property owned by Hamilton Crossings Homes LLC."
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Ordinance 902018, an amendment to read that the applicant will adhere to the site plan attached as Exhibit A dated November 1, 2018.
Second. Well, I have a motion by Mr. Rodriguez and a second by Mr. Morrison for...to amend Ordinance 902018, adding that the applicant will adhere to the site plan attached as Chapter A dated November 1, 2018. Questions or comments? Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Tanner?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Ordinance 902018 has been amended as noted.
Thank you, Mr. President. At this time, I'd also like to table Ordinance 902018 until two weeks from now, November 20th, 2018.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Rodriguez and a second by Mr. Morrison for...to table Ordinance 902018. Questions or comments? Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Tanner?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Ordinance 902018 has been tabled until the November 20th, 2018 meeting. It's the last, the only item we have on the third reading, so we'll move to our second readings, of which there is no legislation this evening under second reading. So we'll get rid of that and move on to our first reading, ordinances and resolutions. First off, we have Ordinance 1012018. It's authorizing adoption of the November 2018 replacement pages to the codified ordinances of the City of Whitehall, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Ordinance Number 101-2018 and move for the suspension of the rules, please.
Second. The motion by Mr. Rodriguez and a second...no, I'm sorry. Motion by Mr. Tanner and a second by Mr. Rodriguez.
A lot of people say we look alike.
That's right, you do. It's the hair.
Yeah.
Or lack of.
Yeah.
Anyway, we're dealing with Ordinance 1012018, and I have a motion to suspend all the rules. Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Tanner?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Ordinance 1012018 has been adopted. Next up, we have Ordinance 1022018. It is authorizing the creation of the North Girling Road Improvement Account and appropriating $300,000 from unappropriated monies in the OPWC issued to fund, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Ordinance 1022018 and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Rodriguez and a second by Ms. Heck for introduction and suspension of all rules on Ordinance 1022018. Questions or comments? Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Tanner?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on Ordinance 1022018.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Rodriguez, second by Ms. Heck for adoption of Ordinance 1022018. Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Tanner?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Ordinance 1022018 has been adopted. Our next ordinance is 1032018. It's approving and making a supplemental appropriation of $500,000 from unappropriated monies in the Health Insurance Trust Fund to the Health Insurance Trust Fund Expense Account, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Ordinance Number 103-2018 and move for the suspension of the rules, please.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Tanner and a second by Mr. Rodriguez for introduction and suspension of all rules on Ordinance 1032018. Questions or comments? Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Tanner?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on Resolution 1 of our Ordinance 1032018.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to adopt, please.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Tanner, second by Mr. Rodriguez for adoption of Ordinance 1032018. Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Tanner?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Ordinance 1032018 has been adopted. Our next ordinance is 1042018. It's approving and making a supplemental appropriation of $50,000 from unappropriated monies in the general fund to the income tax refunds expense account, and that ordinance is being read by title only. That's the last ordinance we have, however, we do have three or four resolutions, the first one being Resolution 422018. It's resolving to approve that and now certificates, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Resolution 422018, move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
The motion by Mr. Rodriguez and a second by Ms. Coniston for introduction and suspension of all rules on Resolution 422018. Questions or comments? Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Tanner?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on Resolution 422018.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to adopt.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Rodriguez, second by Ms. Coniston for adoption of Resolution 422018. Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Tanner?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Resolution 422018 has been adopted. Our next resolution is 432018. It's adopting and...adopting the revisions and amendments in the 19...gee, in the 2018 update to the Stormwater Design Manual, and declaring an emergency. That's being read by title only. Our next resolution, and the last resolution for the evening, is Resolution 442018. It's authorizing the mayor to enter into a fiscal agent agreement with restore rebuilding broken lives and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Resolution 442018 and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second. A motion by Mr. Rodriguez, second by Mr. Morrison for introduction and...uh, introduction and suspension of all rules on Resolution 442018. Questions or comments? Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Tanner?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on Resolution 442018.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to adopt.
Second. A motion by Mr. Rodriguez and a second by Mr. Morrison for adoption of Resolution 442018. Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Tanner?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Resolution 442018 has been adopted. It's the last item of legislation we have before us this evening. That brings us to our second opportunity for poll public. If anyone would like to come forward, you will have up to three minutes to address council. All right, we'll move on to Community Day Board.
I hear there's a little game coming Friday.
There's the Veterans Day Parade on the town.
There is.
Oh, Karen, I forgot to fill out the form. Can you put me on that?
Just everybody show up, just show up. Everybody be in it.
Are you over at Aetna?
Yes.
Okay.
At Aetna, that's what the high school would love to have everybody in it.
What time?
Aetna.
Thank you.
And then get out and play is on the 17th at John Bishop from 10 to 11. I have a thing in front of me, so.
Who else has something for Community Day Board?
That's a good for you.
Greg Samuel-Sam's coming up there.
It is?
On the... Yep, 15th at 11, 9 to 11:30.
Got it right here.
Got it right there.
Right there.
Sam Coniston didn't do that, I did that.
All right. Anything else for Community Day Board this evening? Oh, that's cheap. Okay, we'll move on.
Yeah.
We'll move on to poll council and begin with Mr. Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good to see some new faces out here, and I know some of them had to take off, but always good to see extra new folks here.
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Canner?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on Resolution 422018.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to adopt.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Rodriguez, second by Ms. Coniston for adoption of Resolution 422018. Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Canner?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on Resolution 422018.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to adopt.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Rodriguez, second by Mr. Morrison for introduction and, uh, introduction and suspension of all rules on Resolution 442018. Questions or comments? Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Canner?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on Resolution 442018.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to adopt.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Rodriguez, second by Mr. Morrison for introduction and, uh, introduction and suspension of all rules on Resolution 442018. Questions or comments? Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Canner?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on Resolution 442018. Our next resolution is 432018. It's adopting and, adopting the revisions and amendments in the nineteen, in the, geez, in the 2018 update to the Stormwater Design Manual, and declaring an emergency. That's being read by title only. Our next resolution and the last resolution for the evening is Resolution 442018. It's authorizing the mayor to enter into a fiscal agent agreement with restore, rebuilding broken lives, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Resolution 442018, and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Rodriguez, second by Mr. Morrison for introduction and, uh, introduction and suspension of all rules on Resolution 442018. Questions or comments? Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Canner?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on Resolution 442018.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to adopt.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Rodriguez, second by Mr. Morrison for introduction and, uh, introduction and suspension of all rules on Resolution 442018. Questions or comments? Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Canner?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on Resolution 442018.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank everybody for coming this evening. I thank you, Wayne Roberts, for being here. And I had the wonderful opportunity of canvassing and talking to a lot of residents in Whitehall, some that I haven't met before, and some that have lived here for thirty-eight years and longer, that were really happy to see us out. And I, and I hope that it doesn't take an election cycle to have us just go out and, and meet some of the residents that exist. Also want to say, go Rams. I haven't been to a game, however, I have read and followed the Rams in the paper, so they are an awesome team. I'd also like to take this opportunity to, um, ditto and echo the, the comments that Attorney Bivens made with regards to how we respond and how we treat each other when it is election season, and, and how the words can continue to stay with somebody. It, it doesn't have to be ugly, and it doesn't have to be nasty. We can agree to disagree, and that's okay. That's what makes us individuals. And with that said, I, I believe that after this is, this is over, we still have to operate as a community. And at the end of the day, that's what we are. And so I just believe that as we grow in community and as we evolve into what makes Whitehall great, and, and all the great things that are happening, we will begin to really understand what all of this means. We don't have to have a lot of infighting, but just to have some, some conversation with each other. And I'm just thankful to be able to get out. I love going out and canvassing and, and talking to everybody and Facebooking, and also that social media doesn't have to be a place where the worst of people come out. And so that's not the use of it anyway. And I would just think that, and I would hope, that we can be mature and adult about how we respond to issues that we really don't agree with, and just move forward in love. Because at the end of the day, I think that's what's going to make us a better community and better people. So thank you for the opportunity. Sorry for my lateness, but I had some business to take care of. And I am here and present and thankful for an opportunity to serve this community.
I would like to thank everybody for coming. Also want to thank everybody for all of their concerns yesterday, when my husband was in a car accident. He was head, head on the driver's side. We're very thankful that he's doing well. We're also very thankful for our public safety and, and fire services that we have here. They were there in a matter of minutes to go ahead and to, to get him where he needed to be, emergency room. And also, as we were heading back to our house, we had a police escort to make sure that we got the car back to our house okay. So I just want to go ahead and publicly thank them, and thank all of you for your concerns.
Mr. Canner?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for coming.